I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the December 16th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly in a white folder. And Robert is in the back room, but he has listening devices if you need listening assistance.
Okay. Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
And a motion and a second. Any comments or additions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of December 9th, 2014.
Motion for the minutes.
Move the minutes. Second.
And the motion is second. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $761,567.33.
Pay the bills. Second the bills.
Have a motion and a second on the bills. Are there any comments? Commissioner Burr.
Among today's bills are $150,000 for armor correctional, $50,000 to catering by Marlins, and $175,000 for a bridge project.
I have a motion and a second to pay the bills for this week in the amount of $761,567.33. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. A, the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for November 2014. And item B is the Register of Deeds official statement of revenue collected in November 2014. They are placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A, is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Any questions for Carrie? And we look for a motion on routine actions.
So moved.
And a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is consider changes to seasonal and variable hour position policy and changes to classification and compensation policy. Carrie Deaver.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. I have two policies for your review this morning. The first is the seasonal and variable hour position or policy. And the reason I'm bringing it forward is because of changes due that are needed, required by the Affordable Care Act. Currently, we hire seasonal employees and we may run them anywhere from a month, two months, to up to six or seven months. Under the Affordable Care Act, there was a little bit of gray area initially and we were hoping to allow flexibility to go up to eight months. The Affordable Care Act's regs have come out and are requiring us to limit that to six months. I've talked to all the department heads affected by this and we think we can live within the parameters of the ACA, but we'd like that changed in the policy to reflect our compliance. The other issue is, under the Affordable Care Act, if you do not have a break in service of more than 13 weeks, if you are rehiring somebody, for their purposes, they consider that continued employment. So if we had a full-time employee who resigned and then wanted to be rehired in a part-time capacity, they would be considered a continuing employee. And for the hours of their work, that would help us determine whether or not they were eligible for insurance. It would be based on what they'd worked that entire year regardless of the break in service or the change in classification. So to make sure that it's clear and we don't have any issues where we have employees bumping up against the 30 even though they're no longer full-time, we're asking for that change in the policy to reflect that 13-week break. There may be some issue that comes up. We hire a lot of people back in certain situations, so I've written in some flexibility for you to look at that on an individual basis in case there's an exception that you need to make, but in general, I think it's a good policy to implement to have that full 13-week break. The other change in that policy has to do with the hours that a temporary employee can work. Currently, we limit it to under 20 hours to be clear that there's a differentiation between benefits-eligible individuals and non-benefits-eligible. Part of that had to do with SDRS regs on when you became pension benefit-eligible. Do use it as some more clarification that we've received from them. It turns out that if we have it in policy and it's clear in our policy how many hours of work, we can up that number a bit. And here again, because we have a lot of staff in the jail, I think it would be beneficial if we could allow our part-timers to work a little bit more an hour or so. I'm recommending a change to put that up to 23, but never more than 23 hours in a week. The second policy I have for you is the classification and compensation policy. You know that we're making some changes to our pay matrix for 2015. Instead of saying step one or step four, I'm recommending we say the first step or the first four steps so that that issue is clear from here going forward.
Okay.
Today is meant to give you a summary of these. For our more complicated policy changes, sometimes we'll do a briefing one week and then ask for your approval the following week. This case, the department heads have all had a chance to review these. Kirsten has reviewed these as well. I see them as fairly straightforward and required. If you'd like to approve them today, that'd be fine. If you'd like me to bring them back next week, we have enough time to do that as well.
Comments or questions for Carrie? Would you like to make a motion or do you want this to be next week?
I think we should make the motion. Everybody's here.
Yep.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to change to seasonal and variable hour positions and policies and changes and clarifications to a compensation plan. Good enough? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And now application for a bid. Today, the next item, our notice and requests. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to post a notice of hearing to consider supplements to various county budgets from various county funds. Darlene Johnson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Darlene Johnson from the auditor's office. There are eight departments that are in need of, general fund departments that are in need of a supplement this year. The total amount of those are $863,500. And then our building fund is also in need of a supplement and that amount is $205,210. Now, these are in addition to the seven departments you approved last week to use some of their personnel savings. Today, I'm just asking authorization to post the notice of a hearing to be held on December 30th.
Are there any questions for Darlene?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to post notice for December 30th for a hearing. Are there any comments or questions for Darlene? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B, a notice was received from the East Dakota Water Development District of their regular board of directors meeting at 1:00 PM Thursday, December 18th at the EDWDD office, 132B Airport Avenue in Sioux Falls, or in Brookings, excuse me. There are no planning and zoning notices and there are no petition for compromise of lane today. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when anybody can speak at the podium to the commission if you are not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move forward.
Okay, it's not 9:15 yet, so we will move on to item 11, which is to consider a motion to approve preliminary plan 14-01 for tracks 1 through 7, inclusive of Nelson's addition, south half, section 26, township 102 North, range 48 West. Scott Anderson.
Good morning, Commissioner Scott Anderson, County Planning Department. This morning, I have a preliminary plan, 14-01, that needs your review and hopefully approval. It's to plat seven parcels of property that are located generally northeast of Brandon. It's at the intersection of Redwood Avenue, Chestnut, or Redwood Street, Chestnut Avenue, and Interstate 90. The applicant is dividing these parcels up into, or the parcel into seven tracks for estate planning purposes. There are two eligibilities only on this parcel. The rest of it, it's primarily all ag land. The parcels range in size from seven acres to 38 acres. It has gone to the planning commission. The planning commission recommended approval with one condition. There was an access easement right here that provided access to tracks 2 and, 2 and 6. It was not labeled on the plat what that was. It's to provide access, legal access, to those two parcels. And the planning commission recommended approval with the condition that they, that that surveyor labeled that as an access easement, which they have done. The surveyor came in and labeled it as an access easement. So now tracks 2 and 6 have legal access. And the preliminary plan has met the conditions set by the planning commission. And I'd be glad to show you, basically, this is the parcel of property. You can see it's just all farmland. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, seek your approval for the preliminary plan.
Any questions for Scott? I just have one. Scott, they're gonna divide up all this agricultural land into small tracks. If a person came and bought one of those tracks for agricultural purposes, they actually would not qualify as agricultural tax base.
That's correct.
Because these plots are all way too small. And there are no building eligibilities on three of them?
There's two building eligibilities and seven tracks, so there's five of them that will not have eligibilities. It's my understanding it's for estate planning. There's a number of children. They're dividing them up for the children.
Any other questions? Commissioner Burr.
Cindy, you brought up the correct point, I think, there, that none of these tracks will be able to get any benefit from their status as being used agriculturally. And we did discuss that at our planning commission meeting and, what can I say?
But may I also add that that's not to say that in two or, you know, down the road, that one person couldn't acquire two or three of those parcels and recombine them into a parcel that's larger than 40 acres. And at this point, it's estate planning and that's how they decided to break it up.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly.
Well, at this point, yes, but I can see two or three years down the road, all of a sudden, somebody come in and wanting a building eligibility on their property. And I think dividing this up into the small tracks is gonna come back and haunt us, but that's a...
I think we were tasked today was just with the road easement or the plating of...
The preliminary plan.
The preliminary.
It's approval of the preliminary plan that will allow them to move forward with a final plat.
Okay.
Which again, has to be approved.
That, once they get the preliminary plan, then the final plat is approved administratively.
Commissioner Pecas.
Well, I'm gonna say yay to this family for thinking about estate planning, 'cause nine times out of 10, the majority of growing litigation, believe it or not, is in the area of probate. Talk to any probate lawyer, they're gonna say, there are more people suing each other in estate cases across this whole country than in any other area. And it's primarily because of the multiple marriages that have exploded in the last 50 years. And we have second families. In other words, people have children from a first marriage. They get married, have a second marriage. They gift everything to the second wife. First children are forgotten. Multiple acts of litigation taking place because of no estate planning. So, you know, ultimately, I think your example of having people eventually acquire these tracks back is probably what's gonna happen. But let's go ahead and pat them on the back for having the sense to do some estate planning, because there's nothing worse than getting a call on the telephone from somebody who said, "My dad died. My new mom didn't even let us know what was going on. And I just saw all of our stuff piled out in the lawn at a yard sale and they didn't even call us." And it happens. It's happening in this community. So, anyway, let's help them with the estate plan that they're trying to grant.
Any other comments or questions? I would look for a motion for the chairman to sign the agreement to accomplish... Whoops, that's the wrong one, sorry.
Just approval.
Of approval for the preliminary plan.
That's my motion.
And a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to item number 10, which is a public hearing on drainage complaint number 2013-0063, located in section 21, township 101 North, range 50 West, in Wayne Township, David Heimel.
David Heimel, Planning Department. Received a drainage complaint about the flooding of residential properties. One second. On some of the properties that are located right here, they're outlined with the individual property owners. They're the affected landowners that live approximately a half-mile west of Ellis Road on Highway 42 or 265th Street, or 12th Street. The area, the subject property where the complaint is being filed against is the area outlined right here. As you can see, the line's running. This is the natural drainage ditch that runs through here. It actually flows the south from Cherry Lake Reserve, follows that course, and ends up going back this way into the road towards Skunk Creek. This was as a result of just sediment runoff and soil erosion. I'll show the, a couple of the pictures. The area in question, the plug drainage ditch is approximately right here. That's as noted in the drainage complaint. Notice of this hearing was sent on November 17th to the property owner, BBR LLC, and the affected landowners. Just a brief summary, this was back in August 15th, 2013. Received complaint about the drainage ditch that filled in and caused water to back up onto residential yards that are located right here, as are outlined on this map. Staff inspected the site on August 16th and determined that the water comes through the culvert under 265th Street into an agricultural field, or through the residential yards into an agricultural field owned by BBR LLC. A letter was sent requesting clean out of the plug drainage ditch. On September 9th, 2013, staff met with Travis Dressen, Department of Transportation, and Andy Berg, City Engineering for Sioux Falls, and determined that the culvert size does not seem to be the problem. However, they both agreed that the drainage way should be left clear of debris for natural flow of water to occur. And on July 24th, staff met with Jason Roskop to view the areas where increased flooding has been occurring as a result of the natural drainage way not being maintained properly on the neighbor's property to the immediate south of the affected residential properties. Staff concluded that there, there does appear to be several areas. I skip forward to a couple of pictures here. This was taken on July 24th of growing hydrophobic vegetation along with sediment runoff and soil erosion. Just skip forward a couple more pictures. These were just recently taken. This is the area that runs between the two residential properties. I believe it was, I think Cotton and Martin, as you can see on that map. And this is just showing that area of overgrown vegetation that doesn't seem to be much different than when the complaint was originally filed. Just skip forward. This is just looking further into it along that drainage way. And then, these are just some of the photos that were submitted by the affected landowners, Cameron Martin, Jason Roskop, and Richard Cotton. Just showing some of the issues as far as flooding concerns in that adjacent area. Just get through these real briefly. This is the area that would, it covers an area that is pretty much the entire area of one of the neighbors' garages. Just skipping forward a little bit. This is where the proposed water line is. You can see some of the debris along there. This is just showing, and then right there is the water level. This is the flow of water. The aerial, the arrow is pointing where the water would flow along that drainage ditch and just showing some of the sediment runoff that has been occurring in this area and causing some of the flooding issues. On July 29th, staff received, or actually, I sent out a letter requesting contact regarding the drainage complaint. On July 29th, staff received an email correspondence from John Brook, maybe a representative of BBR, the property owner, Equity Homes. And staff provided Mr. Brook with the information regarding the drainage complaint. On August 5th, 2014, Mr. Brook stated that they are in agreement that the drainage ditch on their property will be maintained, will be cleaned out. On October 2nd, staff requested an update on the issue regarding the ditch clean out and Mr. Brook indicated that they're waiting for harvest season. During the past few months, there's been a general consensus among neighboring landowners that this issue will be the same as the previous years or years. Flooding and lead to further property damage because the issue has yet to be addressed properly. On December 10th, 2014, staff inspected the site, as you can see in those pictures that I indicated, and determined that the issue presented in the drainage complaint, the original drainage complaint, has not been addressed yet. However, there may be additional surface water runoff from Highway 42 contributing to flooding concerns. So action, the board, first, the board shall make a determination whether they will accept jurisdiction over the particular type or category of drainage which was set forth in the complaint. If the board does accept jurisdiction, oh, if the board does not accept jurisdiction, the dispute may be taken to Circuit Court. And this is under section 4.03 of the Drainage Ordinance. Any questions?
Thank you, David. Any questions? I think first, we need to decide whether this board is, determine whether this board is gonna accept jurisdiction over this particular type of drainage issue. And so that is the first discussion we need to have. This is considered, I believe, a private matter and under 4.03, we can decide whether we want to have jurisdiction over this particular type of drainage issue. We have not addressed these in the past.
Kirsten Nervanese.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Benega.
Just a question for the attorney. If we make a motion for the developers to correct this issue and nothing happens, we don't really have another step to follow other than take it to Circuit Court, correct?
Well, I mean, planning and zoning may have some, may have, we may have some enforcement powers. I would have to look at that specifically. Generally, what's happening with these type of disputes, though, is this is dealing with natural drainage ways. I think that's the distinction that you're dealing with here as opposed to most of your drainage actions, of course, under the Drainage Ordinance have to do with tiling and things like that. So this is a whole different category of dispute that, that you're deciding. Ultimately, that Circuit Court remedy is still there, whether you, as a board, take this jurisdiction on or not for these types of disputes. It may end up in Circuit Court anyway, because that's the appellate remedy under our ordinance as well. It's the same route if, if one side or the other is not satisfied with, with the decision of the board if you take on jurisdiction.
Commissioner Pecas, did you have a comment?
Well, it's gonna wind up, most likely, in Circuit Court despite what we decide here. So we can spend a lot of time debating this particular subject or we can let the Circuit Court hash it out. Just looking at the pictures at first blush, this is outrageous. Honestly, they can deal with it now or they can deal with it with the bang of a gavel in the courtroom, but this is exceeding the drainage permit by tenfold. And, you know, I was just thinking off the top of my head, just wait till the Waters of America pass because the EPA will be knocking at Mr. Brook's door because this much water, I'm sure that's governed under the, the water grab that the EPA is gonna be utilizing. So it can be in our Circuit Court or it can be in federal district court. The result is still the same. There's probably gonna be a bang of a gavel. I wouldn't have any problems if you guys pass this off to the Circuit Court and let them decide. This is pretty outrageous.
There is no permitting with this either, because that's what the difference is, is that's why we haven't dealt with this before. This is not a permitting issue.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
You've made the exact right statement there, I believe. And so I would make a motion for us to deny ourselves as making adjudication on this.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to determine that the board will not take jurisdiction action on this drainage. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We have decided not to take jurisdiction action on this issue and you'll have to take it to Circuit Court. And I think all of us can see by pictures, it's an issue, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Actually, by us not taking any action, we probably sped up the process a little bit, because if we would've taken action, it would've delayed it probably another six or seven weeks before they end up deciding to go to Circuit Court. So actually, we just expedited it a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Moving on to item 12, is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement for accomplishing the Sioux Falls area transportation planning process between Minnehaha County and Southeastern Council of Governments. Ken McCarland.
Commissioners, this is an annual agreement that you sign with SECOG to perform the Sioux Falls area transportation agreement. As you know, that's a collaborative effort between a number of jurisdictions, including Minnehaha County, Lincoln County, and the city of Sioux Falls, and they're working through the SECOG UDC, the Urbanization Development Commission, et cetera. So again, this is an annual agreement that you sign every year for, for the SECOG to perform this function. And as part of it, it does make $77,800 of federal highway funds available to both our highway department and our planning department for approved transportation planning activities with the local match. That is a reduction from 2014 and it's not unusual to see this fluctuate from year to year. So all the activities of the, of the planning, of SECOG, the planning department, are laid out in the Unified Planning Work Program, which is also attached to your, your contract here. And so we would look for a motion for the chairman to sign the agreement to allow SECOG to continue doing that service for another year.
Are there any questions for Ken? Look for a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
And a motion and a second to sign the contract with SECOG. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 13 is consider a motion to declare or approve the day after Christmas, December 26th, 2014, as an administrative holiday for Minnehaha County employees. Ken McCarland.
Commissioners, as you know, we have 10 recognized holidays that appear not only in our county employee handbook, but also in our union contracts as well. And as they relate to Christmas, those include closing at noon on Christmas Eve, and of course, we give the Christmas Day holiday. Because the Christmas Day holiday happens to fall on Thursday of this year, there are a number of government organizations that have already chosen to give that day as an administrative holiday to their employees. That includes the state of South Dakota, the city of Sioux Falls, and Lincoln County as well. And that, so we're bringing this action to you to see if you would like to follow suit and to grant that day as an administrative holiday. As you know, with, with that happening, we have a lot of interaction between not only state employees through the court system, but our, we tie in with a lot of things for vehicle registrations, et cetera. So having one open and one closed, while not insurmountable, does create some, some difficulties when we are, when we remain open and they are closed. Again, we recognize 10 holidays, however, our contracts also say, "And any other day declared a holiday by the employer." And so that is your ability, if you so choose, to follow the example of the state of South Dakota, the city of Sioux Falls, and Lincoln County to grant that day as an administrative holiday. I will tell you that I have briefed our elected officials and I have briefed some of the departments that have people that are on call to get their feedback and input on this prior to going, bringing this to you. And I have received no negative feedback from those departments that this will cause them much of an issue if you decide to take this action.
Are there any questions for Ken? Any comments? Commissioner Burr.
Well, the fact that the city and the state are already going to be closed, it's going to cramp any operations we attempted to do on those days. But I point out that hundreds of our employees will be working, working as correctional officers, working as sheriff's deputies, working as perhaps snowplow operators. We will be on the job. The fact is that some of our functions, which would've been curtailed because of the actions of these other governmental entities, will not be happening, but I just don't want people to think we're not on duty.
Are there any other comments?
I'd make a motion to approve that. Second.
And a motion and a second to approve the day after Christmas, December 26th, as an administrative holiday for Minnehaha County employees. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 14, consider a bid award for replacing bridge structure 50-290-135. Bids opened on December 10th, 2014, and authorize the chairman to sign contract documents. D.J. Boothey.
Morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. We had a bid opening last week, Wednesday, for this contract. This project is the small bridge that is just northeast of Corson, and it's on a township road and will be removed and replaced with a culvert with, along with a low-water crossing on this roadway. The bids that we received were exceptional. We received 13 bids, which is the most bids that we've received in quite some time. I haven't seen that for quite a while. So, very competitive bidding. Our final construction estimate was around $130,000 and this bid was, the low bid was just over $99,000. So we look forward to accomplishing this project. The contractors indicated that they might be interested in working this winter if, if weather allows, which would be great for us. So if you have any questions on the actual contractor bid award, I could... So if you have any questions on the actual contractor bid award, I can answer them now.
Are there any questions for D.J.? Commissioner Pecas.
D.J., you know, the lowest bid is 99. The highest bid was 174, and even the closest other bids were like 110. Did they forget something?
We did look through every single one of the bid items on every single bid, and while there were some anomalies throughout the complete proposal for everybody, there were no shocking things. They were just generally lower, which on a small bid like this, we're not necessarily too surprised to see a $10,000 gap. They were close enough for us to be comfortable with it, but it was something that we took a very close look at because we don't want to have somebody just totally miss something and then not be able to perform the contract.
Well, the low bid is about two-thirds what the engineer's estimate was. That's why it just kind of takes me back a little bit, but I'm glad you checked it.
Any other questions for D.J.? Look for a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to award the bid for the replacement of a structure near Corson, I believe. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, D.J.
Item 15 is to authorize the chairman to sign a contract with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for rumble strip pavement marking project PH 635315, PCN 051E, to install rumble strips on Minnehaha County 151 from I-90 South to the Minnehaha-Turner County line. D.J. Boothey.
Commissioners, we were approached by the Department of Transportation last year on a project that they were planning for, I think, several different areas, and in Minnehaha County specifically on County Highway 151 from basically the south side of Hartford or I-90 down to the county line. That section of roadway was identified by them as being unsafe for certain reasons, a narrow roadway, no or limited shoulder width, and high volume of traffic count. And so they proposed that they install some rumble strips. And the way that this program works is we have a 10% match on this contract for construction, and then after the DOT completes construction, then we're responsible for maintenance of the improvements. And so if we do an overlay in the future, we would probably have to put those rumble strips back at our own cost. We've evaluated this and do support the project, and so we're requesting your approval of the agreement between us and the DOT for the DOT to construct the work.
Are there any questions for D.J.? Commissioner Pecas. Excuse me, Commissioner Barth.
Pecas.
Yeah, Pecas, I got it all. Commissioner Barth.
So we're putting them on the edge of the driving thing. It's not going to be difficult for bicyclists.
There are different provisions that we look at for designing rumble strips, and I'm sure that the bicyclists will be concerned about this. In our review, or in the DOT's review, I'm sure that they considered bicyclists also. One things that you- one of the things that you can do is move the rumble strip away from the white line or either direction in order to provide a thorough way for the bicyclists. In the DOT's review and in our review, it looks like it's probably more important to have the rumble strips there in order to prevent the vehicles from leaving the roadway than to accommodate for the bicyclists.
Commissioner Benega.
D.J., I'm curious, what's the cost of the county to replace those rumble strips down the road if we do do an overlay or do road improvements?
I would expect it to be the same, the $100,000.
So it does have a significant cost to it.
Right, right. And this is for seven miles, seven and a half miles worth of rumble strips on both sides of the road.
Okay.
Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Kelly, I've taken a respite today.
What is the- what- when do you estimate you're going to have to resurface this or do an overlay on this road?
Probably not for quite some time. We did a chip seal project on this recently, and we will be doing another chip seal project on it before we ever overlay it. So it would be greater than 10 years, more than likely, or about 10 years.
More than 10 or 20, exactly?
Probably 10 to 15, I would guess.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Pecas?
Well, I was putting up campaign signs this last fall. Actually, I actually had to put air in my tires, and I stopped at that actual- there's a little gas station right there, and I stopped in there. There were a bunch of Hartford folks in there having coffee, and they were talking about the young lad from Hartford that had rolled his car. If we can put rumble strips up there, I think it'd be well advised.
I have one more comment about the bicycles, and I did note that there is a section in here called bicycle gaps. These lines are going to run lateral and not perpendicular, which normally they're perpendicular. It will be a huge hazard to bicyclists, and I think it's just, this is our way of telling bicyclists, beware, we're sticking them in, they'll be lateral, they're going to be under that white line. They might not be as visible the first time you head down that road. That is a narrow road. There isn't a lot of space. I know bicyclists don't really like to drive on the outside of the white line because of glass and stuff that gets kicked out, so it is kind of a bicyclist beware. There's going to be gaps, I think of about 10 to 16 feet.
10 feet.
10 feet in between there. It's still a hazard, and it's a narrow road, so just need, you know, bicyclist beware that we are doing that to that road, so. Any other questions or comments? I would look for a motion on-
So moved.
-a motion and a second to allow the Highway Department to go forward with rumble strips and pavement markings. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 16 is to authorize the purchase of one unbudgeted salt spreader unit from Custom Truck Equipment of Sioux Falls in the amount of $13,221 for the Minnehaha County Highway Department. D.J. Boothey.
Commissioners, every year during the long-range planning process, we identify equipment that we budget for replacement, and this year was no different. We identified several pieces of equipment for replacement. Not on that list were salt spreaders, and we clean up our salt spreaders in the spring and we hang them up, and then we go back to them in the fall, and we hope that there wasn't too much deterioration that occurred on some of the units. But this year, we had two units that had quite a bit of deterioration and more so than others, and we are looking at trying to replace those. We had one unit that was rear-ended in our first snow event this year that was damaged pretty good. Not necessarily needing replacement on that unit. We're hoping to kind of harvest some parts from other units to fix it up. We did get a replacement part for that unit if we do in fact need it. The salt spreaders, the DOT bids those every year, and we have a DOT contract that we used to purchase a salt spreader earlier this year, and the contract has since expired. So the vendor has authorized or approved a bid or a quote for the DOT contract price because the contract is no longer open. And what we were hoping to do is purchase two salt spreader units off of that contract. The contract was closed, so we couldn't do that. We were hoping to still purchase two, but if you add up two of the prices for those salt spreaders, it was- it's over the $25,000 bid limit, and so then we have to go back to the- just the one. We received a second quote, which is off of, I think, the Minnesota State bid, if I'm not mistaken, and that is, I think, $22,000 for the exact same piece of equipment from the same dealer and everything. So the DOT price that was quoted to us at $13,221 is a very good price. We've been spending 10 to now $13,000 over the last couple of years for replacement units, so they have been going up, but it's a price that we have to pay to keep those units in service. The two units that we are hoping to replace, the one with the purchase of a salt spreader here, is not a stainless steel, it's just a regular steel box, and it has rusted through in several different locations, and there's literally just pieces falling off of it. I've sent around pictures before of how our guys hold the units together with big, heavy-duty straps just so they don't fall off when they're driving down the road, and so they get to be in pretty bad shape before we look to replace them. So with that, I would request to have authorization to purchase an unbudgeted salt spreader unit for $13,221. We do have budget remaining that we're able to move around and pay for this expenditure.
Any questions for D.J.? Commissioner Pecas.
I'm going to make a motion. Make the motion to approve it. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions regarding this salt spreader? Commissioner Benega.
Well, this will be my last pet peeve for 2014.
Oh, oh.
There's another week. Harold, don't pace yourself.
You know, the practice has been that we buy stuff with the Highway Department, sell it through Iron Planet or whatever as salvage, and it goes into the general fund. Both of these items in '16 and '17, we have enough expected revenue and monies to come from Iron Planet salvage to be able to do this if we would change our policy or practice of putting those dollars back into the Highway Fund rather than the general fund. So again, that's the last sermon for 2014 because you've heard it before.
Commissioner Barth, did you have a comment?
Yes, I just, you know, the stainless steel one is what we purchased earlier. Why wouldn't we want stainless steel on this as well?
I'm sorry if I was confusing. This is a stainless steel sander that we're purchasing, but we're replacing a regular.
Right, okay. Excellent. Thank you.
We've been getting a lot longer life out of the stainless steel spreaders.
I have a motion and a second to approve an unbudgeted salt spreader unit for the Highway Department. Any other comments? All those-
I was just going to say, it's better to do it now than wait till February when it's fallen off the back of the truck, so.
Right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 17 is to authorize the purchase of one new forklift from Lift Pro Equipment Company of Sioux Falls in the amount of $24,521 for the Minnehaha County Highway Department. D.J. Boothey.
Commissioners, we had budgeted for 2014 a purchase of a forklift, and through our surplus process this last year, it was originally denied to surplus the equipment, the nine pieces of equipment that we ended up surplusing in November. And so our original purchase of the forklift that was budgeted was delayed indefinitely, I guess you could say, with the delay of the surplus. We did end up selling on auction our forklift in last week, December 11, I think was when that auction date was. And so now we have two forklifts with our operations. We use three forklifts. One of the two forklifts that we have remaining is in very need of expensive repair, and so we are hoping to replace the forklift that we surplused earlier this year with a new forklift, so we have two in good shape, and then one that is almost more of a backup than anything else, but it is still serviceable. We have two forklifts that we operate out of our Sioux Falls shop, and then one forklift that we operate out of our Colton shop. And so while this was originally budgeted, once the delay happened, we budgeted another one for 2015. If this goes through today, then we will not be purchasing the one that is in 2015, which is good because our original budget for equipment in 2015 was cut by $320,000 during the budget review process. And so we would hope that we don't have to purchase a forklift in 2015 with that reduced budget. So we have received two quotes, both of them just barely under $25,000, and so we can go through the quote process and not the formal bid process. And the low quote was $24,521 from Lift Pro Equipment Company of Sioux Falls. And so if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Any question?
The lead time on the forklift, I think, is like 12 weeks or 13 weeks.
Any questions for D.J.?
Make a motion to approve that purchase. Second.
I have a motion and a second. My question, D.J., is how much did you get on Iron Planet for a piece of junk?
We got a lot more than anybody expected. We got $4,000 plus or minus, and we were, I think, expecting $500 or so.
Well, it's good. That cuts that price down just a little bit. So I have a motion and a second to approve the budgeted item, purchasing a forklift for the Highway Department. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 18, consider a motion to supplement $67,726.88 from the Highway Fund to the Highway Budget, ASN 17251, Bridge Maintenance and Repair, representing reimbursement from FEMA stemming from the June 2014 flood events. D.J. Boothey.
Last item, Commissioners. This work is FEMA reimbursement for Category C, which is road and bridges. A lot of this work was performed by our own crews, not contract labor. We will still be getting hopefully about $106,000 from FEMA probably throughout 2015 as our Category C contract work is completed. But this reimbursement, similar to the last couple that we've done, is for the majority of the stuff done by our own crews on roads and bridges.
Are there any questions for D.J. on this reimbursement? Look for a motion.
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second to supplement $67,726.88 to the Highway Fund, from the Highway Fund to the Highway Budget, representing reimbursements from FEMA. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 19, consider a motion authorizing the Director of Equalization to purchase one Chevrolet Impala from Lamb Chevrolet in Onida, South Dakota, in the amount of $17,629 from contract number 16676, competitively bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota. Kyle Helsa.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Helsa, Director of Equalization. I'm looking for authorization to purchase one vehicle on a competitive bid out of the 2015 budget. They expect a six-to-10 week delivery time, so.
This is out of the 2015 budget, as he said, and we did have a long discussion about Kyle's vehicles, so are there any questions for Kyle?
I would move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman or authorize the Director of Equalization to purchase one Chevrolet Impala. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kyle.
It is replacing two vehicles. We've been putting a lot of money in two of them to keep one of them running at certain times, so there are two that are going into surplus with the purchase of this one, so.
Wonderful. Maybe we get $5,000. Thank you.
Item 21, consider a motion to declare plumbing fixtures from old jail unit in public safety building as surplus property for purposes of disposal by salvage scrap metal. Mark Krins.
Good morning, Commissioner Mark Krins, Assistant Director of Facilities. Due to some plumbing issues on the second floor of the public safety building in the old jail, we removed the fixtures, and we have roughly 30 of them, and we would like to sell them as scrap metal because they're no longer usable.
Make that motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 21 is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, I think since our planning director's here, I'll let him give a comment about our planning commission.
Good morning. Scott Anderson again for the Planning Department, and I just wanted to give you a quick update that we have one vacancy on our planning commission, Mark Rogan. His term expires, and I worked with Robert, and we sent out a press release to the media outlets. We posted it on our website, and we did- yesterday was the deadline. We did not get any responses. So I'm just letting you know, we will need to appoint someone for our meeting. Well, we can wait as- or you can wait as long as you like, but our next meeting is the end of January.
Okay.
So we do have a little bit of time. You may want to consider who you'd like to appoint to this position. There's a lot of interest in the county commission seat, so maybe this would be also someone that would be willing to serve on that level as well. But I just, we attempted to beat the bushes and-
Okay.
So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Ken has a comment.
Scott, is there anywhere in particular in the county for representation purposes that you want this member to come from?
Well, we don't- we just sort of have a general policy or a general area that Mark Rogan would serve in, and he would serve in sort of that Garrettson area. But that's not to say that you are required to appoint someone from the Garrettson area, but he is up in the Garrettson area, so it is wide open.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Are there any other liaison reports?
Well, SDACC board meetings last week, we need- they kind of sent me back with the alcohol tax that we got to kind of rewrite it to make it clear. They didn't spend much time, if any, on it. I think the whole emphasis, from what I gather, is that everything's going to be transportation this year, and that nothing is going to get done on the county level until the transportation bill is decided, which will probably be late in the session. So anyway- So anyway, we will, we will prepare the document, Kirsten, and Ken and I will do it and put it in. I, it's going to be a difficult year for counties up there, I think, because I think if they start cutting, we're going to be the first ones to suffer on the, on the transportation bill even.
Yeah.
Other than that, the convention will be in Sioux Falls in sixteen. It'll be a pier again next year, and in sixteen it'll go to Sioux Falls, and I think they're going to pretty much do Sioux Falls Rapid City from then on. It's not fixed, but it seems the way it's going.
Okay. Great. Any other liaison reports, Commissioner Barth?
Just a comment about Commissioner Kelly's report, which is, you know, we were not able to come to an agreement on the exact verbiage of a potential tax on alcohol, and so we turned it over to the executive board to hammer it out, and they sent it back through to us. Now, I would also say that yesterday I got a call from a citizen who's an advocate for the legislature allowing on a county-by-county basis a tax to be imposed, and, you know, that would give local control. That would give us an opportunity to recoup some of the huge costs we have with alcohol. But additionally, I guess I would say that this, this road stuff was certainly imposed on us from outside. It was not the main topic of discussion when we were meeting as county commissioners, and so now our priority is their priority? I'm not sure about that.
Any other liaison reports?
The other condition was that we will also find a sponsor.
Yeah, they just kind of dumped it right back on us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have one liaison report, just an email that I got the other day from the Fair Association, that this last week was the International Association of Fairs and Expositions, and they hold a contest every year, and we actually, our fair received several awards. We got third place in agricultural category for our new Pipestone Building. We received third place for our advertising communications, and we received, for the fair specifically, and we received second place in Division Three for, let me see if I can figure this out, Communications Category Eighteen. I'll leave it at that. But anyway, congratulations to our fair on receiving some national attention for things that they have done with our fair. I guess we can move on. Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel and legal briefings.
That's my motion.
Oh, we have one, one more comment of old business, sorry. Auditor Litz.
Bob Litz from Elections Department. I'd like to give you a point of information that Commissioner Barth, a few weeks ago, wanted the public to have some input into the Election Review Committee, and Robert and I got together, Robert Wilson from the Commission Office, and it was observed that, you know, the county already has a device for such communication on the website, and, but we did contact IT, and they're going to put a header on there that will say Election Committee, Election Review Committee, and that will be for those questions.
Okay.
And we, you know, we normally, in the course of our business, do get some questions about elections, and we answer them in a timely fashion, which we will do, but we will bring forth all types of, you know, every, every question that concerns elections to the review committee that we get from, you know, now until such time as it's deemed no longer necessary.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Barth.
First of all, let me say, Auditor Litz, that's great. I really appreciate this, I think. So exactly where is it for people who are listening or watching that they can find that, that link?
If you go to the Minnehaha County website, and I don't, I don't really know because I've not been there, but there's a, there's a place where you can contact the, the various departments in, in the county, and it's my understanding that we're going to put a header up there that will say Election Review Committee.
Super.
Any other questions? Thank you. I believe we had a motion and a second to adjourn into.
No.
Nope, okay, we need a motion.
Motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel and legal briefing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Meeting adjourned.